This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, because the audio input thing is important.
The problem is, is that the estimated amount of water there is between 7 and 10 million gallons. And we're going to be pulling it out with an 8,000 gallon tanker. If you do 7 million divided by 8,000, that's 875 truckloads. Not going to go very fast. So we're looking at possibly that along with pumping and moving water places. We may have closed streets. We may have to close things down to move water to places well beyond that area. So we are working on that. We also have Henry Drive. That area, Henry Drive is flooded, which is up into the high school. That got into the band hall and the course room. Two feet of water were in there. Schools are planning to open up on Wednesday. So we are trying to pump that down. What we're doing there is we have a pump that is pumping the water into ponds on Woodland Elementary, that property. And then we're tomorrow, depending on how things work, if those ponds are full, we'll move the pump to the pond behind the nursing home. The nursing home gave us permission today to pump into their pond. And so we'll either move that pond, excuse me, move the pump, or we'll have additional pumps from the county and the state, just depending on timing of when those can be delivered. And then there's also Zephyr Oaks Court, which is on the northeast portion of the city. It's on the east side of Wire Road, close to the northern pond for Zephyr, or excuse me, Abbott Park. That line is overflowing, or that manhole is overflowing. They're bringing in a pump to pump that area to see if that works. If that works, then good. If it doesn't work, I had a resident come in and tell me that back in 97, 98, that they pumped to the clay pits. That's what he called them, the borrow pits on 23rd Street, county borrow pits. So if the pumping that they're doing today doesn't work, then we'll extend it, or try to extend it to the borrow pits and lower the level there. What was the question?
Where was that?
23rd Street, north of Otis Allen.
Okay.
It's county borrow pits. There's one on the west side of 23rd Street is just a big pit. The east side property has a lot of fill, road millings, things like that. So I don't know how much water could go in there, but that is something that we'll look at if the current pumping does not work. What's our next issue? Distribution sites. This is something that's been pushed out by several different organizations. And I just want to kind of, this isn't a gripe, but what is happening is different organizations and groups are just standing up sites. And there's not a, sometimes there's not a whole lot of coordination that's occurring. Sometimes these sites pop up and we find out that they're operational and after the fact, or during the fact. So we're doing our best to keep up with those. We met with a group, or we had a phone call with a group today, and we're like, hey, let's, let us evaluate what the need is. Within an hour, they had called somebody else, got permission, and they're bringing in food tomorrow. So those are the things we're working, working around. With that being said, Pasco County is distributing food and water at 5435 Gall Boulevard. That's today until four, that was today until four. And I believe it's through the week. That is right. Okay. I believe that's through Friday. World Kitchen is set up in front of Alice Hall. It looks like a food truck, so there's not a whole lot of lines. I think people are assuming that they have to go up and pay, but there is food in front of Alice Hall. There's Operation Barbecue Relief, and that's at Walmart. And there's Feeding Tampa Bay is coming in tomorrow. We believe it's at West Upper Hills Elementary School. That's yet to be confirmed.
The barbecue place was, there was no evidence of it at the Walmart site today. So are we sure it's coming again tomorrow? Have they indicated they're coming again tomorrow?
To be honest with you, with the distribution sites, the food sites, I don't know. Because there's-
I think it's important for people to know the city is not coordinating or managing any of that. We'll do our best to share it, but-
Right. Yep. Yeah, I think that is an important part is we're not providing this. We're just pushing out the information that we get, and we're trying to notify everyone as best as possible. Talked about Feeding Tampa Bay. First Assembly of God, the ZFA Church, out on 54, they were providing relief supplies. There is a gas distribution center. There's one on the west side, one on the east side. And what they're giving is, the state is giving everybody 10 gallons of gas for free. That's out at the Wiregrass Mall site. If you came in, you see in the library parking lot, there are comfort stations there. The hope is that those will be stood up tomorrow. So what I learned today is that they, there's one group that delivers them. There's a second group that comes in and sets them up. And we want to make sure that they're set up before we start using them, so that we don't have what happened at another location where they started using them and they didn't have the gray water bladders attached yet. So we're working on that. Pasco County does have a manning schedule for those. We will have to backfill into some of the, some of the time slots that weren't, were not filled. That is my update of what we're doing, how we're trying to address it. What I did not talk about is public works and the tree removal. We are currently cutting up trees, removing trees. I believe all the trees that we can get to that are on roads, that are not in a flooded area, have been removed. We've, I believe, cleared most, if not all, of the alleyways. Okay. So if there's not water, they've been removed. Now, if there's water, obviously, we're waiting for that to reside, so that we can get the trees removed. I believe that's it. Yes, ma'am?
So with the comfort stations, if we need help manning that, could we try to get volunteers in the community too, to help with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. My understanding is that you have to have two, they recommend two individuals. Basically, you're sitting there, and if anything happens, something breaks, doesn't work, whatever the issue is, they give you numbers to call. You call that number, report it, shut it down. The benefit of it being right here is individuals can go into the library and get on the computer. They can read a book. They can sit on their phone. They can just find a chair and relax. They can charge their phone. What was that? I'm sorry.
I was going to say, plug in your phone, charge your phone.
Those include bathroom? Would, tell us, tell us-
I don't know what's over there yet.
They have bathrooms, two-
Yeah, because the audio input thing is important.
The problem is, is that the estimated amount of water there is between seven and 10 million gallons. And we're going to be pulling it out with an 8,000 gallon tanker. If you do 7 million divided by 8,000, that's 875 truckloads. Not going to go very fast. So we're looking at possibly that along with pumping and moving water places. We may have closed streets. We may have to close things down to move water to places well beyond that area. So we are working on that. We also have Henry Drive. That area, Henry Drive is flooded, which is up into the high school. That got into the band hall and the course room. Two feet of water were in there. Schools are planning to open up on Wednesday. So we are trying to pump that down. What we're doing there is we have a pump that is pumping the water into ponds on Woodland Elementary, that property. And then we're tomorrow. Depending on how things work, if those ponds are full, we'll move the pump to the pond behind the nursing home. The nursing home gave us permission today to pump into their pond. And so we'll either move that pond, excuse me, move the pump. Or we'll have additional pumps from the county and the state, just depending on timing of when those can be delivered. And then there's also Zephyr Oaks Court, which is on the northeast portion of the city. It's on the east side of Wire Road, close to the northern pond for Zephyr, or excuse me, Abbott Park. That line is overflowing, or that manhole is overflowing. They're bringing in a pump to pump that area to see if that works. If that works, then good. If it doesn't work, I had a resident come in and tell me that back in 97, 98, that they pumped to the clay pits. So what he called them, the borrow pits on 23rd Street, county borrow pits. So if the pumping that they're doing today doesn't work, then we'll extend it or try to extend it to the borrow pits. And lower the level there. What was the question?
Where was that?
23rd Street, north of Otis Allen.
Okay.
It's county borrow pits. There's one on the, on the, um, the west side of 23rd Street is just a big pit. The east side property has a lot of, um, fill, um, road millings, things like that. So I don't know how much water could go in there, but that is something that we'll look at if the current pumping does not work. What's our next issue? Distribution sites. This is something that's been pushed out by several different organizations. And I just want to kind of, this isn't a gripe, but some, what is happening is different organizations and groups are just standing up sites. And there's not a, sometimes there's not a whole lot of coordination that's occurring. Sometimes these sites pop up and we find out that they're operational and, um, after the fact or during the fact. So we're doing our best to keep up with those. We, we met with a group or we had a phone call with a group today and we're like, hey, let's, let us evaluate what the need is. Within an hour, they had called somebody else, got permission and they're, they're bringing in food tomorrow. So those are the things we're working, working around. With that being said, Pasco County is distributing food and water at 5435 Gall Boulevard. That's today until four, that was today until four. And I believe it's through the week. That is right. Okay, I believe that's through Friday. World Kitchen is set up in front of Alice Hall. It looks like a food truck, so there's not a whole lot of lines. I think people are assuming that they have to go up and pay, but there is food in front of Alice Hall. There's Operation Barbecue Relief and that's at Walmart. And there's Feeding Tampa Bay is coming in tomorrow. We believe it's at West Upper Hills Elementary School. That's yet to be confirmed.
The barbecue place was, there was no evidence of it at the Walmart site today. So is, are we sure it's coming again tomorrow? Have they indicated they're coming again tomorrow?
Be honest with you with the distribution sites, the food sites. It, I don't know because there's.
I think it's important for people to know the city is not coordinating or managing any of that. We'll do our best to share it, but.
Right. Yep. Yeah, I think that is an important part is we're not providing this. We're just pushing out the information that we get and we're trying to, to notify everyone as, as best as possible. Talked about Feeding Tampa Bay, First Assembly of God, the ZFA Church out on 54. They were providing relief supplies. There is a gas distribution center. There's, there's one on the west side, one on the east side. And, and what they're giving is, uh, the state is giving everybody 10 gallons of gas for free. That's out at the Wiregrass Mall site. If you came in, you see in the library parking lot, there are comfort stations there. The hope is that those will be stood up tomorrow. So what I learned today is that they, there's one group that delivers them. There's a second group that comes in and sets them up. And we want to make sure that they're set up before we start using them so that we don't what have what happened at another location where they started using them and they didn't have the gray water bladders attached yet. So, um, so we're working on that. Pasco County does have a manning schedule for those. We will have to backfill into some of the, some of the time slots that, that weren't, were not filled. That is my update of, of what we're doing, how we're trying to address it. What I did not talk about is Public Works and the tree removal. We are currently cutting up trees, removing trees. I believe all the trees that we can get to that are on roads that are not in a flooded area have been removed. We've, I believe, cleared most, if not all of the alleyways. Okay. So if the, if, if there's not water, they've been removed. Now, if there's water, obviously we're waiting for that to reside so that we can get the trees removed. I believe that's it. Yes, ma'am.
So with the comfort stations, if we need help manning that, could we try to get volunteers in the community too, to help with that? Okay.
Yes. My understanding is that you have to have two, they recommend two individuals. Basically you're sitting there and if anything happens, something breaks, doesn't work, whatever the issue is, they give you numbers to call. You call that number, report it, shut it down. The benefit, the, the, I guess the benefit of it being right here is individuals can go into the library and get on the computer. They can read a book, they can sit on their phone, they can just find a chair and relax. They can charge their phone, what's that? I'm sorry.
I was going to say plug in your phone, charge your phone.
Those include bathroom, would, tell us, tell us.
I don't know what's over there yet.
They have, they have bathrooms, two sets of bathrooms and washing machines. So people who don't, and, and the only, I hate to sound ungrateful, but I went and looked at them this morning. They're not handicapped accessible.
I'll talk to the county about it.
All right. I mean.
Probably can get a, like a temporary ramp or something like that, like an aluminum ramp or whatever, but they probably need to provide that.
My only.
Yep. I'll, I can ask about that. I will say one thing I, and sorry, we put this together kind of right before we walked in here because I was out looking at the lift station. If anybody is displaced, there is, the shelter is at the Wesley Chapel Rec Center, the new rec center. So individuals can go there. The good thing, I think, and I don't know the numbers for Duke, but power is coming back on throughout the city. The numbers are really low. I have spoken to Duke and to Witlicuji this morning before lunchtime. We were under 500 people, properties that were without power on those two companies. Duke, we asked, we haven't received a number back yet, but every day they're bringing on more and more. So I think the, the need for the comfort stations should be reduced unless obviously your house is impacted by a tree or, or water. But we do have options for those individuals to be able to go to a shelter. There is, there is a, and I don't know, we haven't verified the location on this, but there is supposed to be a clothing distribution site. We're, we're trying to figure out where that, that address is or where that location is.
Bill, I have one question about the debris pickup. I'm noticing in a lot of the flooded areas where the homes have been flooded, they're putting their stuff, the personal belongings from the home.
Yes.
Out. How are we going to deal with that?
So we will pick up both, uh, any, any storm related household, you know, your drywall, things like that, that you have removed. I don't know about refrigerators. So the.
How will that be dealt with because people are putting them up?
So appliances, let us talk about appliances. So we'll, we'll talk about that. We'll have to, we'll have to come up with a game plan. So tree, lawn debris, tree debris, one pile.
Household.
Household, you know, insulation, drywall, another pile, aluminum, things like that, another pile. If people come and take your aluminum after you put it out by the road, let them take it. That's less, has to be picked up.
Yeah, definitely.
People take your appliances to scrap them.
Exactly. Let them take it. Just put, just, they need to be separated because we can't, we cannot co-mingle the, the two types of debris. So they have to be separated.
Is that information on the website or something we can place on the website?
We will put that out. Yes. Yep. So we have been telling people that as they call in and ask. Right now, we're still in the, the cut and remove. Once we get through that, we will start picking up the debris and taking it to landfill to burn. We're waiting on a burn permit. We should hopefully, we got it, so we'll start to burn tomorrow. We don't have a timeframe of exactly when we will start picking up from curbside. One thing that we will push out is that we ask that everybody take their debris and put it on the curb at the road, not in the alley. Because we can't go through with the big trucks to, to pick up in the alleys. We do have companies, other companies coming in. We've already contacted two different companies to come in and help with the debris, the tree cutting and removal. The plan is to have one company look at all the parks and the cemetery and they focus on that and, and start that cleanup. While we focus on the areas that we're, where we are. And we'll continue to work with, um, that's a good song. You're good. That's the best thing I've heard today, so I can't complain. So we, we're, we're looking at bringing in as, as much help as we possibly can to try to get the city back as close to normal as, as we're used to. The, the governor did have a presser yesterday, or today? Yesterday, talking about he's, he's reached out to FEMA, you know, they made an application, the state's made an application to try to get some of the funding for debris removal, 50% of it upfront. And, and he has a goal of having everything removed within 90 days. So, I mean, I haven't put any pressure on the public works director, but we're going to see if we can get cleaned up quicker than 90 days. So, and we're going to have to have a lot of help with that.
I was, I was going to say, you know, one thing that you did not mention that was, uh, was talked about in the meeting this morning is the proactive action of our public works director and, and our staff. And that is to get an, an, an old landfill designated as a temporary site for debris removal, which means that the trucks that are coming to help us don't have to drive out to Pasco County. They're going to stay right here in town.
Correct.
And that's going to make things go quicker, less, but quicker turnaround and less fuel. And it was just a win all the way.
Yes. Correct. Yep.
Thank you for that.
PD, update on the PD. I, I gave that this morning. You guys are aware of everything that they've been doing. They switched off of Alpha Bravo and they're back to normal shifts as of 10 o'clock this morning. What is? So Alpha Bravo means that all of the day crew, like both, all, all day shifts are working at one time. And then all of the night shifts are working at night. So they work 12 hours on, 12, 12 hours off. And so.
Have a day off.
The Tuesday before the storm, we went to Alpha Bravo and so the department worked. The day shift worked Tuesday through Sunday, 12 hours every day. And the night shift worked 12 hours every night. And so now we're.
It allows us to double the number of officers that we have on the street.
Correct. Yes. And so when a gas truck comes in, tanker comes in or we're coming in. I don't know, chief, we had almost every officer that was on shift manning traffic. And, and so things are getting back to normal, stations are having gas, the lines are dropping, so they're more manageable. So we're, we're back to regular scheduled shifts.
And, and we also still need everybody to conservatively flush water down the system.
Correct.
Our system's overloaded right now, it's septic. So we just need to be very, very conservative with flushing anything down to the septic system.
Yes. Yep. I'll, I'll reiterate that we do not have a boil water notice. So our water is fine to drink. You do not have to do anything to it. But yes, we ask you, you are able to flush your toilets. You're allowed to flush your toilets. We are allowed to take showers. We just ask you to be as conservative as you possibly can to help reduce the strain on the collection system. The faster we can get these pumps and get everything back in control, the sooner you can take as long of a hot shower as you'd like. Because, well. Any questions? One, one thing I would like to ask. Part of the, how we've, how we have handled operations here is that non-exempt employees receive, you know, their overtime for hazard pay or for storm pay. Our mid-level are getting hour for hour. Anybody above them really don't, they don't really receive anything. I'm asking council to allow our upper management to be paid overtime pay, straight hours for disaster, storm related activities beyond their 40 hours.
I think that's a great idea and it's well deserved.
And additionally, it's going to be reimbursed by FEMA.
It will be reimbursed by FEMA.
I'd move approval of that item.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Typically, the way we handle it is small events like clean, it was for a day. We just kind of flex out sometime. I know several department heads and have put in 30, 40 hours in the last couple of days. I think, I think that's fair for them.
Well, and a number of them have been sleeping at work or at least one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just was, you know, some of the things I think you've touched on about the way we're going to drain cul-de-sacs on streets, we're just going to try to do what we can with pumps and different things. When are we going to restrict or are there any restrictions for people who want to get into flooded homes to get belongings out? Or, or they can, they have within means, safety means they can do that?
I think within safe, safe means, some common sense approach to it. We have not, and I apologize, I know you gave me a list. I, I did not have a chance to, to look at the questions. So I apologize. You know, I would say common sense of getting to your homes. I spoke to a, a mother and a daughter today that live on Brentwood. And they said that they woke up and had to leave all their stuff sitting in their house. There's no way they're getting back to their place. Now, if they wanted to get on a kayak, they have a friend with a boat. They could, I'm sure they could go out there. They probably need to let us know that they're going.
But we had people park in front of my house and take canoes over to get some stuff out of their house. But, you know, I mean, one woman was 85 years old and was taken out in a boat to get out of her house. She can't go back in that way.
Right.
Is there assistance, private or public, to help people get water out of their house? Do, we don't do that or?
We will not, we, as a city, we are not taking water out of houses. We will try to reduce the flooding to where it's not breaching their doors and or windows. And then at that point, it's on the homeowner. Now, that's part of the mobile office hours. I believe FEMA will help with that. And so the assistance that we give is that we'll provide, we're providing a location for FEMA representatives or council, or excuse me, Congresswoman Lee's and Senator Rubio's offices to, to operate out of City Hall or out of the council chambers to provide that assistance.
Will they assist with homeowners filing insurance claims? Is that what they're doing or not?
I think it's, I'm sure they will. My understanding is that there, it's, there's FEMA claims that you can submit and that's what they're, they're helping with. I'm sure they have, if they're not able to help with that, they have, they have a contact that they will direct you to.
And that'll be here?
That'll be here.
Yes, sir. Do we know when or not?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
They have, we're hoping it's tomorrow. I was supposed to get a call by four o'clock today. I've not received it, so it may not be till Wednesday. So we're trying to figure out.
Post it in the website, social media.
Correct. We will push it, we will blast it everywhere that we have. We'll either use council chambers or we'll use the library meeting room or both, depending on, on what the need is.
My last thing was, and you really, I think you're going after all kinds of help monetarily and physically on the ground.
Correct.
Different.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we're making, we're making the request. We've been able to get onto the web EOC. That's where you make your request from. So we've, we've gone that route. John had a contact, so that's where we got the sewer pumpers from. And so we're just, wherever we can get help is, is where we're getting it from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You and I had spoke, the river's cresting. Can you go and give us an update? Because at one point I heard that Hillsborough had not crested yet and it was going to be.
So it, it did crest, Hillsborough did crest and it is receding. It should continue to recede. Yes. The Witlicuji is not scheduled to crest until, I believe, Thursday.
That doesn't really affect our people.
No, it should not. We're in the Hillsborough River Basin. So it, it is receding.
So the. Like Fort King and around that way?
I don't, don't know. I don't know that answer. Yeah.
I doubt it as well.
Yeah. I don't think it will, but we've seen a lot of crazy things that have happened. So it's a lot of water and it's everywhere in the city.
County and region.
Correct. Yeah. It, it is, it is regional. It is not just, you know, one pocket here and there. It is all over. It's ironic, well, not ironically, but a lot of the newer subdivisions have held. The older areas, I mean, it's.
They're designed to 100 year flood. Right.
Correct. So we've had to the north, we've had downtown to the south, east, west. It's, it's everywhere. You can't pick one thing and be like, that's the reason why, other than it was a lot of water.
Right. If you look at beach and night, that, those, that retention punish is undersized for that neighborhood. Probably didn't have 100 year flood requirements when that was developed, so.
Correct. Yes, sir.
No, I'm just wondering, does anyone else have any more questions? At city manager?
Yeah. I just wanted to say a couple of things before we go.
Sure.
Just because I feel like I should. You know, everybody has to remember we had 18 inches of water in 24 hours. That's unheard of. None of us have ever seen that in our, in our state. We're not old enough to have seen that. And so this is unprecedented. I am beyond impressed with our staff here. When I look at our police department, the way that they stepped up. I have been in other communities where the police are sitting at lights that are black and they're not getting out of their car to direct traffic. They're only sitting in the cars. And I see our officers on the ground directing at every place. That is true leadership, chief. I appreciate the leadership that you have over there, what your department has done. The day that this happened, I was in a panic mode. Chief showed up in the gator and I cried for a long time as we drove around because this is, this is our town. This is where we live. This is, we are who we are because we're community and we love each other. The utilities department has done an amazing job to keep things going. The water department, Public Works. I've been out every day watching them cut down trees, watching everybody sweat beyond measure. Everybody is doing everything that they can possibly do to help our community. There's no one that's not. And our city manager has been 24/7. I don't know that he has slept more than a few hours since this happened, along with many of us. So I commend him. I know he's not even going to look at me, but that's okay. I commend him, our staff, our citizens. I have been out, I'm watching citizens helping citizens. I have watched little people, old people on the side of the road that don't know what to do and their neighbors are out there helping them. This is why we live where we live. This is why we do what we do here in this city. This is why we serve because we love our community. So I thank the churches that have stepped up, our employees that have stepped up. We are not going to stop working. This isn't over for us. We're going to be working non-stop until our city is put back together. So I know that there's blame everywhere going around. There's no blame. This is a natural disaster. This is unprecedented. We are not the only city. If any of you have power back and you are looking, there is cities everywhere. Every mayor that has been affected is feeling the same way we are feeling here. So please, please know that we're doing all that we can. We care about you. If there's something we can do, let us know. I've been trying to help people get the FEMA stuff. I, I got it figured out on my phone, so now I'm trying to teach people how to do it. I'm grateful. We've had our congressmen here, senators here. Everybody's been here to evaluate. They've been boots on the ground, working hard to get us the resources that we need. So I just want you to know that. And I'm, I'm very grateful to be surrounded by such amazing people. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, thank you very much for the, the kind words. But definitely is not me, is the team from department heads down to the ones that are hired two weeks ago. I've got the easy part of the job. All right. I get to come in, in the AC and, and field phone calls. It's, it's the men and women that are out on the street, like you said, directing traffic, cutting trees, down in the, the bottom of a manhole, you know, water hole, you know, whatever it may be. So thank you. But it's, it's really the staff that's, that's really rocking it, so.
And I hope I express that because I agree.
You did.
It's a whole team effort.
You did. And I'd just like to say, and there's always a danger of leaving people out, but I'd like to recognize the airport for securing airplanes and only having a couple of them flip. I'd like to recognize Ricardo for answering the phone all day and the women at Public Works who, when I went in there this morning, one was crying because she was being screamed at and yelled at. I wanted to recognize the building department for being out there to make, checking the security or safety of buildings that have been hit by trees or different things. I'd like to recognize HR who was out there in the aftermath, checking all city buildings for our liability issues. And everybody else. I mean, everybody's played a part, so. You know, I guess it takes a village.
Hey, uh, thank you, mayor.
I was just going to say, maybe there's some things we have missed in the crowd that serves some needs that some people are here for that we need to let, come up and, and let us know how we can help them.
Yes. Please, ma'am. Would you please state your name and your address? Go right up to the mic, ma'am.
Michelle DeLoreto.
One second, ma'am. One second, so we can get it recorded. Thank you.
Go right over there.
There you are. Please. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Is that better?
Yep. Perfect.
Okay. So like the last time we've even had close to flooding like that has been in '04. So this is, you know, I know, but like the flooding started at the beginning of September. So this is not, you know, we just keep praying that this next storm out there doesn't come this way because we're gonna be, our neighbors are completely underwater and we're gonna be next. So I know like that Billy had mentioned that there's a solution in the works and I was wondering when we would be notified of that solution and, you know, what's going on with that. And then my other question was, like, we can't even begin to do tree removal or anything because we are completely underwater. We like live on an island, like literally. We have to, I had to go to Amazon and have boots delivered to my parents so that we could get in and out of our house. So would it be something where we would call and say, hey, we have our debris ready? You know, because we don't know when this water is gonna go away. So two questions.
So the preparation that the city did up to this point, again, this flooding started with the storms, with the four inches of rain that we had in an hour and a half time span. And the road flooded. Preparation from the city was that we began pumping. We were pumping into the two ponds on 20th Street. We would pump them full, let them perk, pump them full, let them perk. We got the pond back with inside the fence. We did everything we could do to provide as much capacity that we could. This is gonna sound harsh, but we had 18 inches of rain in a period of time. Our system could not handle it. This is not unique to this location. We have it throughout the city. We're doing everything we can to pump it. We understand there's water in houses. We've reached out to a company. We've spoken to Pasco Emergency Management to get pumps and as soon as we can move it somewhere, we will move it. The plan right now, the two ponds on 20th are beginning to perk. We're gonna start pumping into those ponds as soon as we can. I don't have a better answer than that. As far as the debris pickup, put it out by the back of curb and we'll pick it up when we pick up everybody else's. I don't have a timeframe on that.
Right. And if you have to do it later, if you have to do it later, I'm sure we will cover that.
Yeah, we can work with that.
I have to say that, you know, when we've had something and I've called, they've always been, go above and beyond to get things moved out, so, you know, I appreciate that.
And we'll recognize that you had to put it out later because of the water. But the interesting thing that you said was it was 2004. That's the same year we had three hurricanes as this year, Debbie and Elaine. So it's just kind of like the mayor said, but yeah, I mean, I was out there today looking at your street and it was like, oh my God, and all the way over to 10th and up. So yeah, it's an oh my God.
Yeah, but even in '04, it was not nearly what this was. So.
Here are the months of saturation.
And that took a lot of the water in those, you know, which are now houses. So, but, so is it just like wait and see what happens or will we, you know, like get an update?
Will you get a pump date? I don't have a pump date to give you.
An update.
Will you have an update?
We put them on the city website?
Honestly, you will probably see the pumps in your front yard. That will, not trying to be smart, but that'll probably be your update because that'll happen before I get to you.
And we can barely flush our toilets, so, you know.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. So we were talking about it today. We've been, we've been working or we've been discussing what we can do in that area. Again, I don't think it's a cheap fix because it's purchased property, install pumps and be able to pump that, sort of like what we do with Lake Necessity behind us. Where it fills up, we pump it somewhere else. The problem is that we don't have that somewhere else right now. And so as soon as we get that somewhere else, we're gonna get on it as of, as late as, I don't know, it was 4:30 today. I was talking to Shane about trying to get your friend Nick, the company that he's with, Shane and Nick were working on it. And so that's the plan we were talking about, trying to get that ironed out, both with what his plan was, along with some other ideas that we kicked around and trying to marry those together to get that water down as quickly as possible, so.
I appreciate all of you, really, I do. And I'm up here complaining, I'm just trying to get some answers.
Yeah.
That's what we have.
So we're just getting answers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Have anyone else signed up, my friend?
Yes, there's been a few people to sign up. I apologize if I say this first name wrong. Marco Vincent? Last name Vincent?
You're a Marco.
Anybody wanna talk about a storm? How about Michelle DeLoreto?
Oh, that's Michelle.
Ruben Rodriguez.
Please, come to the mic, sir. And if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
I think that one's working now. We'll try it.
Yeah, my name is Ruben Rodriguez. I live in 5238 Betty Street in Batman. And my house got destroyed. And I don't know what to do. Anyway, my, the house got destroyed, the windows, the water came in. Had to tell my wife to go to us, this is house. Got your gas asthma. Had to take out all the carpets, dug them out. Because I was smelling too much, you know.
Have your address again?
5238 Betty Street in Batman.
In Batman.
Mr. Rodriguez, we're planning on having, hopefully, starting tomorrow, this week, we'll have representatives from Congresswoman and the Senator offices here to help with the FEMA claims and get you assistance to file those claims and hopefully get you all the financial assistance that you need.
Can you give us, come around and give him your phone number and we can advise you When the federal people, like he said, are here, we'll call you so you can come down and talk to them.
Get some help.
And they can help, they'll provide some help.
Do you need a place to go now? Do you, are you able to go back in your home or you've got a place? Okay. Okay. Gotta figure it out.
Do you have power at home?
I have power, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You've gotta put the other carpets out.
Let's see what we can do if we can get some churches or something to come help. Okay? We've got your information, okay?
I'm so sorry, sir, for what happened.
Sorry for your loss, yes.
All right. Do we have anyone else sign up to speak?
No one else signed up to speak at this time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move forward to the mayor.
Are we doing these? Are these people here?
Yes, they are, sorry. Okay, here we go.
Looks like we have the Sarah Vanderberg Tennis Foundation is promoting the Razor Racket fundraiser, is that right?
Oh, this is, you've got the...
Oh, that's an old, that's an old one. Okay, sorry.
So, I know, now we get to do this.
Mayor, want me to do that for you?
Nope, I got her. I got her. This is my friend. So, you know, it is Mental Health Month and I think that's a little apropos for us. We've also just barely dealt with a suicide in our family, so this is a little bit emotional. Maybe I do need you to help me. Thank you. Sorry.
All right. You care.
Whereas the city of Zephyr Hills recognizes mental health as part of everyone's overall health and well-being and acknowledges mental health illnesses are prevalent in our city, county, state, and nation. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death among young adults, and 90% of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination may keep those who might benefit from mental health services from seeking help. Whereas there is a need for comprehensive services and support that are family-driven, youth-guided, culturally and linguistically competent and community-based. And whereas all citizens should be aware of mental health treatment resources that are available and that recovery is possible. And whereas, mental health services support not only the individual who live with a mental illness, but also are beneficial to their families, friends, and community at large by decreasing homelessness, hospitalizations, and criminalization of the mentally ill, all of which impose a significant emotional, mental, and financial cost to our community. And whereas, mental health illness affects everyone directly or indirectly, directly through family, friends, or coworkers. Therefore, the government of the United States of America designates the first week of October to raise awareness of mental illness, fight discrimination, and provide support. Now, therefore, Melanie Barr Monson, by virtue of her authority vested in her as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll quit crying now.
Thank you, guys. I know that, look at my neighbor, what we're going through on Beatty Street, but one thing about it, say it to my hometown, mental illness was here before Milton, it's here during and after. You have to check on each other. Like, we're a community and we're a resilient community. Like, to see just people helping people, that's what makes us Zephyr Hillians and that's what makes being a Zephyr Hilian so great, but mental health, telling you, my life is a missile, respect all y'all, but you have to take care of here and home as well. I'm crying, so I'm done.
Thank you, Kim. All right, so a sobering note, we're gonna talk about our water use permit.
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to pull that item.
We're not gonna talk about our water use.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that item. There's some information that we need to clarify.
Okay.
Before we present to the council, because without that information, it's gonna cause a lot more questions. And so we need to delay that. The plan is to try to get it back by the 28th, if we can get everything in. If not, as soon as we get that information, we'll provide that update to you.
Okay, do I need a motion to remove this?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
All right. Next, we're gonna go to the consent agenda items. We have a total of 11. We can either do them all as one or if any of the council wants to pull any for discussion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All no? No no's. All right, and now we'll move on to the next. Please forgive me, y'all.
We'll help.
Next item's, business item 3.1, it's a public hearing. It is the second reading of ordinance number 1494-24. An ordinance by the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating section 130.24, smoking prohibited in city parks and vaping prohibited in or on city property, establishing prohibited conduct definitions and penalties, providing for repealer, codification, severability, and an effective date. And like I said, this is a second reading and a public hearing.
All right, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this item?
And I signed up to speak to this item.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And to the council.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve this item and I'd also like to add that I think we had a presentation from a young group from where?
School district.
Brooksville?
Pasco County, school district.
Was it Pasco County? That came to us with this matter. So these were young people that came here with an idea and because they had an idea and pursued it, it becomes an ordinance in our city. So you can make a difference, okay? You really can, but I would move that we approve this item.
Thank you for bringing that. I have a motion.
Mr. President, if I could also make a comment, you know, I don't know what the origins of this were. What I do know is that a very close friend of ours vaped and suffered third-degree burns because the lithium battery that was in the vape cartridge that he was using caught on fire. And so by prohibiting that on city property, including City Hall and other places, I think there's an opportunity there to protect folks who are not aware of that potential problem. And so with that, I will second your motion and...
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you.
I'll get with it.
Okay.
Wait till I see Kenny.
Next item is business item 3.2. It is the first reading of ordinance number 1495-24. Ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, annexing in approximately 9.98 acres, more or less, into the corporate limits of the city, described as parcel number 23262100200020040s and parcel 232621002000200010 in Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date. And this is a public hearing since it's a land use.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this issue?
No, I have no one signed up to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close the...
This is nine acre, 9.98 acres that is adjacent to property in the industrial zone.
Why don't we get, I think the staff's ready to make a presentation on this.
Oh.
We need to enter some things into the record.
All right, please, before the...
Tommy Lee Hunt, GIS, community planner with the city. For this first item, it's the annexation, future land use, map amendment, and rezoning for Mitek. It's 9.98 acres just south of Tucker Road. It's on the screen right now and that's just being brought into the city. It's gonna be used as secondary access for Mitek's future manufacturing facility that will be just to the south of that.
Thank you.
And.
Any questions for?
Yeah, Tommy Lee, can you tell us what Mitek is and the jobs that they're going to bring?
Yes, so Mitek is a housing and structural building manufacturer. They make trusses and different materials that are used in home building and different buildings. And it will be generating, I think, it was 165 jobs.
Great.
And just for the public, the industrial property does not fall under the moratorium because it's not adding apartments and houses and.
Correct. This property and the south, southern property as well, they're both factored into our current water use permit.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And one, can I, and Tommy Lee, this is adjacent to a larger piece that, that the applicants, prior to the new owners, had come in to ask for residential, but we denied it, did not allow the residential, came in with these manufacturing jobs, which is what we need. So. Got the manufacturing jobs, won't cause the traffic issues at that area, so we feel like that's a very good use of the property.
Absolutely. All right, um, do you have anything else for us?
Um, this property is being rezoned from County AC to City LI, which is light industrial. And for the future land use map amendment, it's coming in at County IL, which is industrial light. And in the city, it will be IN for industrial.
Anyone have any questions?
I'm going to make a motion to approve on the first reading ordinance number 1495-24.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes for unanimously.
Unopposed.
All right, well now we will.
All right, next item's, uh, business item 3.3. It's also a public hearing. It is first reading of ordinance number 149624. Ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida proposing amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing a small-scale comprehensive comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, changing County IL to City IN industrial, and the zoning designation from County AC to City LI, light industrial, for approximately 9.98 acres of real property located south of Tucker Road, west of Pine Street, and north of the city of Zephyr Hills municipal boundary, having parcel ID 23-2621 0020 00200. 0010 and 262321 0020 00200. Four zeros, providing for repealer conflict severability and an effective date. And this is a public hearing. And it was already addressed what this is. This is the future land use map amendment and the rezoning of the same property that was annexed in.
Do you have anything for us?
Nothing additional.
Okay, uh, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this?
No.
Item. Seeing none, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Before you close, we'd just say that we would like to enter in the record everything that was presented on the, the previous ordinance for this one as well, for the purpose of the hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, I close the public hearing. And I'll.
I move that we, I move we, excuse me. I, I move that we approve ordinance number 149624 on its first reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, next item.
Item's business item 3.4. First reading of resolution 830-24. Resolution of the City Council of the city of Zephyr Hills, related to height, approving a conditional use to exceed the height limitations of the LI Light Industrial Zoning District on parcel 232621 0020 01300 0020 and 242621 0010 03900. And then 0010, finding conformity with comprehensive plan and land development code and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Have anything for it?
Yes, so this is that southern property I was addressing in the former item. This property is owned by Mitek as well. This is where their manufacturing facility will be located. They're requesting a conditional use for the height limitations in the city. They're asking to be allowed 46 feet. Within the city, it's allowed up to 30 feet. We did receive the authorization from the FAA that there's no conflicts with the regard to the proximity to the Zephyr Hills Municipal Airport. And yes.
That's it.
Thank you. Um, council, have any questions? All right, I believe this is a public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this item, sir?
No, there's not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I'll put it to the council.
Mr. President, I move approval of this item. Did we need to add anything or not? Okay, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in.
Second.
Councilman, you know, seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Good job. Uh, next is the planning director's report.
Oh, we, we, there's nothing, sorry, there's nothing under.
Nothing there, okay. We'll move on to Public Works Director's Report.
Good evening, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. You have a memo in your packet for our annual street resurfacing project. Once again, we're piggybacking off a larger agency to get their lower unit prices for an entire county for our city streets. And I have a street list attached. I don't have that in front of me, but we are lumping three projects together. We're doing the Veterans Park Fitness Trail, the Veterans Park Parking Lot, the ZPD Parking Lot, and then our street list.
Did you say, would you repeat those parking lots again?
I'm sorry.
Could you repeat those parking lots again?
The parking lots are the Zephyr Hills Police Department Parking Lot, which I've worked with Chief Brewer on that, I believe that's the original parking lot from '06. It's never been resurfaced, so we're going to do that. We're going to do Veterans Park on Third Avenue, the parking lot, and the entire fitness trail in the park. That's.
Yeah.
Starting to crack and, yeah.
And then our street list, too.
We use.
And you said Zephyr Park?
No.
Oh, no, okay, Veterans Park, okay, that's what I was.
Veterans Park, PD, and then our streets.
It's the parking lot plus the trail with veterans.
Right, and, but you're doing Depot Park at some point, right? But that's not part of those?
That is not part of this. That's a different project. We have to have that designed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The engineer's in the room.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
No, I just got Zephyr and Veterans mixed up in my head.
Does include Cruisin' Field Parking Lot, too, I think.
It's on the list, yeah.
Yeah, Cruisin' Field, Road and Parking Lot.
Field Road. Front of the bathroom there on the, south side of the park.
There's, there's some acronyms here, like BM, BMO, Vets Memorial, BMO, Vets Memorial Parking Lot and Trail. And then there's underneath that ITB Asphalt Paving Agreement. That must be the name of the.
That's just.
Those are, that's part of, so that's, so we're piggybacking off of, um, who are we piggybacking off on this one? Sumter County. Sumter County. So a lot of that stuff that you're reading there, that's a supporting document to show that it was, it was properly bid and awarded through Sumter County, and we're piggybacking that. So that's just the supporting documentation.
Something Cape through South Avenue?
Cape Seal.
Yeah, that's Cape Seal. That's, that's a type of play, uh, paving.
Okay.
So pavement reservation.
Some of them are, are Mill and resurfaced, and some are Cape Seal, and I, and that's abbreviation from their contract.
Okay, got it.
Proposal.
Traditional Mill and Overlay, Cape Seal, and Double Micro.
Got it. An explanation.
Do you have anything else for us, Shane?
I don't, I just.
Well, thank you. That was a good report and.
I move that we.
Oh.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah. Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I move we approve the Public Works Director's Annual Street Resurfacing Report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Next item. Eight, City Managers Report.
Holiday schedule. Okay. Um, regularly scheduled, uh, meeting dates for November are November 11th and 25th. Uh, and the meeting dates for December are December 9th and 23rd. Staff is requesting to cancel the 20, excuse me. Is requesting to cancel the November 25th and the December 23rd meetings due to the holiday season and potential scheduling conflicts. With that, um, we would also request that the November 11th meeting be rescheduled to November 12th because November 11th is Veterans Day and we are closed. We always, sorry.
Tuesday.
So if we could have, if we could reschedule the 11th to the 12th. And as always, in an emergency, uh, we could schedule a special meeting to be held at the end of November if we need to. Uh, but the request would be to cancel the November 25th meeting and the December 23rd meeting and reschedule the November 11th meeting to November 12th.
We don't usually, uh, cancel the second meeting in November, do we?
No. We, we haven't. It's, it's the same week as Thanksgiving. Um, I mean, it's two days, or whatever, three days before Thanksgiving. So if, we would like to have it, we'd like to hold the meeting. We can, but historically, we've canceled the second meeting in December.
Well, I'm not worried about that one. I understand that one, but, you know, we've been pretty busy lately. I hate to, otherwise. November 25th, I'm thinking about. Look at you two.
I whispered Billy wants to go out of town. Uh.
I was just teasing him.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
I won't be here. I won't be here on the 25th, yeah, the week of Thanksgiving.
It's a regular meeting.
I, I mean, I, I would move approval of the, uh, cancellation of the December meeting, what's at the 23rd. And then we'll, let's just.
And then reschedule the 11th to the 12th.
We schedule 11th to the 12th.
And why don't we decide the 12th on the 25th?
On how busy we are, yeah.
Charlie? We talking November?
Tell him there's a meeting, he'll be here.
Would you be available if we had it that month, that night?
The November 12th and 25th are for the November meetings, and then cancellation of December.
Oh, shoot, you know what?
Twenty.
The 25th, oh, I'm so sorry.
So, and, and really, all we need is three. So it doesn't, all of us don't have to be here, so, but we do have business we have to conduct sometimes.
On the 25th of November. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I'm saying the last one in November, we typically cancel, or in December, sorry. But the two in November, if we can change to the 12th and then the, and leave the, the last one, that I would be, I would be in favor of that.
I might be able to reschedule my other meeting. And then the other thing is that that is also, I believe, the Christmas tree lighting. I think that is Main Street's Christmas tree lighting, but I have to ask, yes.
Except for.
25th?
25th of November.
Yeah, I think we should be here. I mean, if we have people who are going to be out of town, we can get a workaround.
We can manage, I'd like to be. And we're canceling the one on the, on the 23rd.
That's the motion, but there's no second, yeah.
I'll stand up.
I'll second your, uh.
Let me restate it. So November be, November 12th and the 25th, and we will not have the meeting on December 23rd.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, your plaque.
Mayor's, are we at the mayor's announcement?
No, we have City Council.
So in front of, in front of you, um, there are three options. Remember, we're redoing, uh, the dais. We had the city seal that's on the front. Um, in front of you, you have three options. Because I'm a chicken and I do not want to make the decision myself. We provided those options to council to get a vote on which emblem or you would like, or which layout you would like on the front of the dais.
And where will this be used?
Right here, right on the front where the current one is.
Okay, I, I like option A. Jump right out.
It's right here. All right, I, you tell me what it looks like, because I can't get my computer.
The plain one, the more plain one.
Yes, I like that one, too.
With Z, with Zephyr Hills underneath it?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a preference.
What's the material, the black circle?
It's exactly like what is here.
What we have there?
Yes, ma'am.
So the advantage of that would be that we wouldn't have to replace this panel necessarily. We would just go over it with another medallion like that. So, so you see, my point is that once they.
We're getting a new.
This whole thing, are we going to?
Whole front of this being.
Yeah, we're getting a whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with A. Will it be backlit or something?
Yes.
Um. We didn't talk about.
Well, here's the challenge.
So we, we have not talked about it being backlit.
Challenge. This is a dark, it's a dark color against a dark color.
If, if. One thing I've learned in, in this event is the answer is yes. We'll try to figure it out. If that's what, if, if that's what y'all would like, we will, we will work towards, um, seeing if we can make that work.
Oh, work.
Backlit. If, if you guys, if you guys decide that, we'll, we'll, you guys pick it. I don't have a preference.
It complicates things, I guess.
Just use the bottom color, the lighter color. I mean, if, if, have the darker, but the letters won't stand out.
Options? Okay, well, if you don't have it, it's fine. They, they have the options. I just.
So, is everybody good with A?
My concern is that we have brown letters with light gold outline against the dark brown wood finish.
Maybe B would.
I, I think so, too.
C has to jump in, I don't like.
Okay.
B's better. It's closer to the wood it is. Nobody sees it anyway, it's on the ground. We told them, that's what we told them to put in there, but I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Chris Penna, did you throw out my logic was? So we have, if you look at the image A, which is a nice design, but the challenge with that is that we have a brown sign with light gold lettering on a brown piece of wood or wood laminate. If we go with the one that has the dark, then everything is gold. So you see the lettering is gold in option B?
It, Ricardo Matt emailed it to you.
Yes, there's a nice contrast there.
Held the presentation.
Well, I don't like to just jump in on that. If it was just that, without the just jump in.
Okay.
We can change it.
Change that. What do you think?
Fine with me.
I think so, too. Jump right in. Yeah, because we may change that tagline, but we're likely to never change the Z again.
Oh, look at you. A.
Play IT on the weekend.
Okay, A. B.
B. C.
All right, I like B.
Modified B.
I like B without the just jump in.
I'm good with that.
With that, Lance?
I'm fine, yeah.
Okay.
So, solve that.
Modified B, okay. All right.
You never can predict what we're going to do, Billy.
I can't. All right. Did you need a vote, or are we good just?
I think just a consensus of, yeah, what, what you guys want. Remember what we put it in. Yeah, you got, you have all that in, that recorded well, right? So when we put it in and they don't like it, we've got the minutes to prove, okay.
There's nothing not to like. It's not, you know. There's nothing not to like, it's not, you know.
Land.
There's nothing not to like with that.
I think I already said my speech, but I, if, I apologize if I left out all the staff, because I know that everybody has been working hard, so, thank you all, I appreciate it. I just got notified that the governor's going to be here tomorrow, you don't know, at 11:30?
Please don't let that go out of this room, I don't know that to be publicized. Huh? Was it on the news? Oh, all right, we're good then.
Okay, I'm like, wait a minute.
Sorry, last conversation I had was keep it quiet, so I was just.
What kind of governor goes somewhere and doesn't want anybody to know?
Just telling you that the person that's been at his right hand on his hip the last several days told me do not release that, so if it's been, there's a press release, we're good.
Where's he going?
Press release went out.
Did it press release?
Huh? Where, where's he going to go here?
Betmar.
Betmar?
So what I was, I don't know, my information's obviously old.
Betmar?
Last I was told was Betmar.
Okay, if somebody could just keep me informed. Okay, I apologize, could somebody keep me informed? Thank you, that's all I ask.
All right, city managers' announcements.
Um, yes, I will be there, I will represent the city. So, one thing we did miss, if we can pull up, is this video or is this still shots? So, we have a still shot, one thing that acts on, which is our body cameras, our PD's body cameras and in-car cameras. Sorry, I lost track on the text that came in, so they flew drones over the city. Flew it over the city yesterday, they flew Silver Oaks, they flew Zephyr Park, they flew all the schools, Henry and 18th. I believe 9th Ave, Beach as well. So we have video, which, that was the link I tried to send to each of you midday-ish, but we have that, that's available. We tried to upload a lot of that tonight, but the files are too big to make it work, so, this is, is Tommy Lee online? Okay.
Yes, I'm online.
So, this is the current flooding that is occurring out there. One thing I will say, FEMA had come in a few days prior and they showed us an inundation map prior to the event of what flooding looked like, I don't know what that was based on. But I walked out of the room, they pulled it up, had a conversation, I walked back in the room and I thought it was a live map, because the inundation map looked exactly like what we're seeing in Silver Oaks. And, and, I'm speaking about Silver Oaks specifically, because that's what was on the map at the time. But what we're seeing there, the way it comes up, the sixth hole towards the fifth hole comes out, Brentwood towards Huntington, is exactly what was shown on the inundation map. But, I hope we can, can show some of the video at some point, I know we're not going to be able to tonight. The amount of rainfall and the damage that was done by water and trees coming down is, is absolutely amazing. Amazing, not in a good way. But just the, the impact that we incurred from this event, when you see it throughout the city, it, it just, it's shocking. But just wanted to show exactly what we're seeing out there currently.
I ask a question. Historically, was Silver Oaks a lakebed?
I don't know that answer.
And, and I understand that there was at one time, an effort to manage some of the water by putting a retention pond across this, across Island Boulevard, is that correct? So there were at least, there were some coworkers.
Yeah, and I can answer that, because this is a plan that's been in our family for years. In 19, this late, in the early 60s, it flooded, I guess Hurricane Donna after a very wet summer occurred and it did the same thing, it flowed over, over Geiger Road. At the time, there was an elevation that Geiger Road was and the water when it flowed over, I believe that's where the engineers established the base elevation for the floor pads. Later on, they, the county came in and put the road in, so it did affect some of the water that would go out. So, but, I mean, there are houses in there that do have water in them, the majority of the people along there had flood insurance, because they knew that they were prone to flood. And the FEMA map was exactly right, if you look at the FEMA panels, that's about where, where the water has gone. Now, the water in there now is stabilized and it, if, if nothing else, reseeding now some, because it's going, it's outfalling, it ends up outfalling through, through Betmar, through the Creek Shed, through Zephyr Lake, on down to the Hillsborough River and Crystal Springs.
My recollection is that we had an issue in the past and that there was some work done to try to move the water under Geiger Road over to a retention pond, clear the areas along the creek, along Betmar and all the way out to Zephyr. But the challenges that we had keeping it clean was that the creek itself is not in our jurisdiction, is that correct? Somebody can probably address that.
Really, then, the problem always is, if you're not directly linked to the river and you're not making sure it's maintained, or you're not the person responsible for maintaining, then you can keep yours as clean as possible, however, if it goes to the next land, that's the conveyance to the river, then it could be impeded, the flow could be impeded. The other thing that can happen is a tree could fall over during the event and impede the flow, even if it was clean before the storm. So, so there's, there's several things and when I was thinking about it, I have some, I have a son-in-law who, who worked in Washington with FEMA at one point. And we, we've got to look at this globally, we've got to look at it from the creek, from the Hillsborough River all the way back and see if we can get some resiliency money from the federal government to help improve everybody's drainage, Betmars, you know, Zephyr Park, all these affected properties and even trying to include some of the areas in our, in our city that are already flooding, if we can convey it to there. So, you know, it, I think we need to think globally as much as possible.
Don't want this to.
No.
Safely in their homes. Oaks in Betmar and I have the fallout of this, of, you know, just poorly managed runoff in water, water systems.
So, I can tell you that post-Haleen, swift mud flew, the conveyance system identified a, like a footbridge that had collapsed and I believe that was addressed. And then, I can tell you, it was flown again today by other individuals and there were some observations that were made from the air that need to be looked into or assessed on foot. And so, that has occurred, I was standing there when the directive was given, go check out this area and, and put eyes on, boots on the ground, eyes, you know, on it. And so, I don't know the outcome of that, that was south of us, so not within our jurisdiction, but definitely could impact the upstream, which is our jurisdiction. So, it is being looked at holistically from Sutton Lake or Lake Sutton, through Simons, through Silver Oaks, through Betmar, through Zephyr Lake, out through the creek to the Hillsborough River, so it is being looked at today.
Global, it's a global solution, not just, we can solve it just within our own city.
Correct.
Problem is, you know, somebody solves their problem, they create another problem downstream, so, we've got to get it globally from, from the start, starting point to an outfall. And that's the other thing that's a problem with a lot of places in, in our city, they are closed basins, the beach area, it's a closed basin, so we've got to somehow get, get some conveyance from there, even down here to Lake Necessity, if we can get stuff to Lake Necessity, it will end up at the Hillsborough River. So, I mean, and let's face it, we, I looked and I keep pretty accurate records, we had about 40 inches of rain in two months, so, I, you know, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question about, you know, in terms of someplace like Silver Oaks, with the flooding that's happening, it's the third time it's happened in probably 25, 6 years. Do we continue to restore and rebuild and, or do we say that we're not going to let people live in certain areas that? I mean, what do we do to Brentwood, do we say it's inhabitable or we, we make it into something else?
Well, I mean, my thought on that is it's the first time that it's got any homes, this is the first time it's gotten in any homes, so this was a much greater event than we've had in the past. The golf course was put in the area it is because we knew that area was prone to flood, so that's why the golf course is there. Golf course goes underwater, it's bad, people are out of jobs, but nobody's house gets flooded. People's house gets flooded in this event and then there is an issue and the question is, you know, can we do something about it? And if not, then I think it's the decision that homeowners have to make individually, I need to get flood insurance and what is likelihood of this occurring again? Who knows?
Yes. Bill Burgess, building official, FEMA will dictate some of that as well, they got what is called repetitive loss and like Lance said, this is the first time I'm aware of that it's been in houses there. But if it continues to happen repetit, you know, repeatedly, they'll make you elevate your home or, you know, you'll have to bring it up, so, they dictate a lot of that.
Oh, thank you.
And Bill, you're right, because that not only applies to Silver Oaks, but the other areas that were flooded too.
Well, and like we mentioned, you know, talking about 9th and 10th Avenue, maybe you do need to buy some homes to, that are in the, in the low spots and, and try to widen the area.
On 20th Street?
Options that are not purchasing of homes, vacant land that we can purchase at a cheaper rate and, and accomplish the same thing.
But the other, and you're right, but there's resiliency grant money that's going to be available and we need to look at every option and that could be one of them, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Billy, can we have the lights?
You know, my parents lived on 20th Street and they, they tore that house down and built a retention pond there, because their house flooded a couple of times while they lived there over a period of about 18 years, so.
All right, city managers' announcements are done, I guess, city attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Well, we'll go to city council comments, we'll start with Councilman Smith.
Thank you, and again, I think I just want to reiterate to everybody in, in here, and we've been saying this as we went around to the, to the residents of the city, we're here for you, we're looking for ways that we can definitely keep your water and sewer running, get the water out of your house, if you have water in your house, and get your power back on. I think we've pretty well, I think most of the power is on, except for maybe in the flooded and affected areas. The water and sewer, I can't stress enough, tell your friends and neighbors, if they're on water and sewer, please let's conserve flushing, because the last thing we want to do is have the entire system down in the city, so encourage them, they don't flush unless absolutely necessary. And again, I, I'm thinking very, on longer term, we look for global solutions to things. It's just heart-wrenching that the fellow from Betmar who lost everything, we saw other people who have lost everything, so, you know, it does impact us very, very greatly, this is our, this is our city, these are our friends, these are people we care about, these are people we care about and, and I, and I met people that I just met that I care about. Because it's just, it's tragic, the, the, the encouraging thing is everywhere that we went today and yesterday, the people were resilient, they're, they're saying, we're going to get through this, they were helping their neighbors and just very, very good attitude, which is nice to, to see, because I know we've heard about those stories about people getting in fights at the gas lines and things like that, so, very encouraged with that. Very, very happy and proud of our city staff, every one of you, guys, you did a great job, we, we got to keep it up, we got to keep going, I know it's tough, but we got to keep going, but thank you, thank you everyone for it, police department, utility, public works. And, the other thing is, nothing's going to be fast, that water's not going away anytime soon, so we've got to just keep, keep at it and be patient, but I can't thank everyone enough, that's it.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman Mukison, please.
Thank you, so I, I feel the same way, I, I think that I have had an opportunity to thank many of you individually. Nathan, I didn't have a chance to thank you, but I know there was a lot of work done at, there at the airport in preparation. What I do want to mention is that our longtime city clerk, Linda Bowen, had a giant tree fall on her roof. And I went to her house within probably 40 minutes of, of that occurring and her neighbors are already out climbing on top of her roof, putting on tarps, moving the trees that they could out of the way and, and the most amazing thing is that Public Works had just been down that road and had hazard-pruned many of the trees, or it could have been a lot worse. So thank you Shane for your foresight in, in that preemptive action. The other thing I, is that I had the heartwarming pleasure of being able to, I, I think the first day after the storm, our city manager mentioned that Public Works and Utilities and some of our other workers had gone all day long without having anything to eat immediately following, because, let's face it, the grocery stores were closed, you know, maybe people didn't have time to get to the grocery stores prior to the event, you know, none of the restaurants were open, I contacted the folks at Sunny's, I contacted three different grocery stores to try to get food stuff, so that I could prepare food for these folks. Eventually, I found Subway was open and was able to provide lunch, reimbursed by the city, but to organize that for our group and I made sure that our other representatives knew, so, not only did Commissioner Oakley come out to thank our workers, but so did our state senator Danny Burgess and our local state representative, Rainey Bagger, they all came to say thank you for all the hard work, so.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I think we've, we, we all agree, we're on the same page, we appreciate everything and I think we've pretty much said it, so, thank you and I think we'll, we'll continue to work to, to get through this, so. I, I have a whole different feeling of when I've watched disasters in other areas on television and see it and kind of go on my way of how it impacts people, so, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, well, what do you say at a time like this, I'm so proud of all of our employees, I'm, I'm proud of our city. We were out yesterday, Councilman Smith and I, and we, we literally, my heart was broken and I know Councilman Smith, but there's people out there that are hurting and yet, one, one person we met, a church family, they saw we were out and they hadn't, I don't even know if they had their power on yet, but yet they're feeding Lance and I. That's what kind of citizens we have, I mean, and none of us got out of this unscathed. But, I believe we live in a really resilient city, a strong city, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, because this city is, it's a caring city. I mean, we can go to other places and it's different, but in this city, we all know one another and if someone needs something, we're there for one another and I'm just so proud of our city and I know we're going to get, we're going to get this all back together, we're going to be stronger than we were before and we will put things in place to help. We never saw anything like this and we probably never will see something this big of a storm in our lifetime, it was 100 years. So in that note, I'm going to close this meeting.
Can I, can I, real quick, spoke to a state representative, it is not a.
Spoke to a state representative, it is not official that the governor's coming. So I ask kindly to everybody in the room and everybody online, please do not push that out, do not start making posts. If it happens, it happens. Just, it's not official yet. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And with that, I will close this meeting.